Thank you so much. Candidates will have two minutes for opening statements, ninety seconds for each question, and one minute for closing statements. Our timekeeper is Teri Baker. She will signal you when you have a minute remaining, thirty seconds, fifteen seconds, and when it is time to stop. At the final signal, you may finish a short sentence. Please do not talk unless it's your turn. Please mute yourselves when it's not your turn to speak. The audience is on mute and cannot use the chat function. Many good questions were sent in advance to those watching. If you have a question of the candidates, please text your question to 253-861-6824. Questions must be general enough that they apply to all candidates. If they're not, they will be changed or not asked. Some questions will be consolidated and may be reworded for content. In ballot order, since John Scansy is not here, we're going to give the first, have the first opening statement from Dave Oger and then Roger Henderson. So, Dave, your opening statement for two minutes, please.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm Dave Oger and I'm a new candidate. I have not run for a political office, at least a public political office. And I'm running because I love Gig Harbor. It's, to me, the best place in the world. I've raised my family here. My children have went through college and training and came back and lived here. And now the grandchildren are growing up and they're in college and I expect them to come back. So it's kind of a natural a natural hometown situation. My background, quite frankly, is that I'm a retired Coast Guard intel, intelligence analyst and financial analyst. I worked with several maritime contractual companies and worked with them to make sure that the monetary contract that was, money that was awarded, actually went to those things that they listed on the contract itself. In addition, I am a retired public school teacher along with my wife. I taught for half of my career at Peninsula High School here in Gig Harbor. And a number of my students I can see being successful residents in Gig Harbor with jobs and a family and very happy. And they're happy to see me when I see them and they're working in some sort of a retail situation or some other situation, quite frankly. I'm, have been in and out of Gig Harbor for about forty years, actually.
You have fifteen seconds.
Mostly in and I am, I'm here to give back to the community that has given so much to my family. Quite thank, thank you.
Thank you. Roger, your opening statement now, please.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm Roger Henderson. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for organizing this forum tonight. I think it's great for everybody to hear what we're doing. I'm excited to be here. This is my second forum in my political career, I guess. A little bit of who I am. I have a BS in civil engineering from Oregon State, a BS in environmental planning and management from UC Davis. I'm a retired civil engineer from the US Army Corps of Engineers. Served this nation for thirty-two years. Harbor Hill resident, Gig Harbor since twenty eighteen, married, three kids, thirty-eight, thirty-five, and thirty. They're getting old. Avid walker cyclist, outdoors, love outdoors. I'm on the Gig Harbor Parks Commission as well. Why am I running? I'd like to bring my engineering expertise to the city council. I think that would be value added. I'd like to provide more respect for the public and for the city staff. I'm concerned about city growth. I'm concerned about a lack of small business in the North Harbor area, concerned about loss of our urban forests and affordable housing. The things that I would pledge if elected or when elected. I have no financial ties to any person, group, or business in Gig Harbor, so I can remain neutral. No partisan politics. I promise to protect our natural environment. It's a legacy that we're going to leave for our kids. Full support for our parks. And I'd like to also acknowledge and continue to acknowledge the native peoples' history, the people that came before us in Gig Harbor. I do plan to encourage small businesses and restaurants, encourage our maritime fishing fleet, and lastly, but not least, maintain Gig Harbor's natural beauty and character. I think you're on mute.
Noel, you're muted. I'm sorry, I unmuted and then I, some message came across. I apologize. Thank you for your patience. So, in ballot order and with rotating questions, the first question will go to Dave Oger. You'll have ninety seconds and then Roger will speak next on the question. And it's a little, it touches on one of the statements that Roger made just a moment ago. Here's the question, Dave. What do you think of the current level of service for the city's parks and recreation? Are there past issues that concern you or future projects you plan to support in the budgeting process?
Well, based on the background and what research that I've done about the parks, area of our city government, they've done an excellent job, quite frankly. They've opened up one and two parks and there's two or three more that are in, in, in planning. And that's one of the things that shines, quite frankly. And one of the things we can credit is Mr. Henderson, who was on the transition committee to, to, to practice those different situations. So I'm just saying that that's one thing that we need to continue on with. I do think we need a few more parks down in the Gig Harbor waterfront area since as people are walking down the lane and looking at the water, there's not that much open space where you can actually see the bay when you're walking. And I'd like to see a little more of that, quite frankly.
Noel, you're muted. I'm sorry, I'm
Okay.
apologize. Roger, the question for you.
Okay, thank you for that question. Yeah, as a Parks Commissioner, I'm pretty relatively good up to speed on what's going on in the parks right now. The, just so everybody knows, the Parks Commission is currently going through a full revamping of the, what's called the PROS Plan, Parks Recreation and Open Space. The last one Gig Harbor had was approved in twenty sixteen, so it's due time. We have to get it out by March. It has a great number of factors in it, but one thing, if you want to get back to the question at hand, number one, the level of service. I think we've got a very good level of service. I don't think we have any parks currently that are overwhelmed or over visited. Clearly, the Scansy Parks and the ones downtown in the actual harbor front area are used more than some of the others. The parks that I support, though, clearly, all the existing parks and also the upcoming YMCA Phase One and Phase Two B parks that are coming. And so, and the last thing I'd like to say on the PROS Plan is that we will be reaching out to the public with public outreach to get a sense again of what the public is going to need. Okay.
Thank you. Roger, you'll be first for this next question. In the July eighth edition of the Gateway, Gig Harbor Police Chief Kelly Bucy, or Bussy, I'm sure I don't know, but aired his complaints about recent Washington state legislation that curtails a range of policing policies, including vehicle pursuits and use of force. He suggests that the police service and public safety have been weakened. What policies do you recommend for the city's police?
Okay. I have had a discussion with Chief Bucy before I took the Gig Harbor Citizens Police Academy course. Respect Chief Bucy. He's done an excellent job and he's a super chief of police. I know the legislation is going to be a tough nut to crack. It's came quickly. It's unfortunate that a few bad cops nationwide has caused this kind of dilemma for all the good cops. I also had a very good talk with our Fire District Five Chief, Chief Dome. This, these, these changes to the law are also going to affect our fire department. What I would like to see is a transitional program, probably either put up by the county for the fire department and perhaps put up by the city of Gig Harbor to help the police where we now find this gap. They've got some challenges. We've got to think through that quickly. I think in the long term, I think things are going to be fine. It came quickly and I think it may have done a little bit of harm, but I am convinced that Chief Bucy and also Chief Dome will work through with the city of Gig Harbor to make this work for everybody.
Thank you. Dave, your response, please.
Okay. I'll have to say that I don't have a tremendous amount of information on this situation, except that I support the trials and tribulations that the police force and the fire department are going through to try and adhere to new regulations that are coming about. And my hat is off to them. I was formerly involved in the Coast Guard, assigned to the Border Patrol, and I understand situations to a certain extent with law enforcement and, and the transparency policies that are come about. So I agree with Roger in that we do need to adopt a transition program so that it'll work for our local police department. And there'll be a smooth transition. We're also looking at purchasing of different types of equipment for that and a training. So it's, it's going to be quite a situation involved in order to have a transition program. So I do support the police.
Fifteen seconds, Dave.
You bet. And I, I endorse every efforts that the police and fire department do to, to demonstrate transparency in their duties. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question is, goes to you first, Dave. Here's the question. Given the intense heat and wildfires and smoke we're experiencing each summer now, how could Gig Harbor address climate change?
Whoa. Well, quite frankly, one of the things with climate change involves discouraging people from using fossil fuels in any way, quite frankly. And I do see more and more electrical vehicles being used. I do see situations where people are using electric bicycles and using those as like a second vehicle instead of around the neighborhood and so forth. So I'm just saying that we're doing what we can. The, the city government has also supported the, the trolley system in the, in the good summer months so that people can leave their cars at home. And that's the best way that we can help with the situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Roger, your answer to that question, please.
Okay, that's a, that's a tough question to answer in ninety seconds. Brain's far, far more intelligent than I. We're struggling with this very issue. I know that our Fire District Five Chief Dome is, just keep some up at night, these urban wildfires. It's all part of our climate change. Although Gig Harbor can't solve the entire problem itself, it can take some pretty good steps to work that way. As I've mentioned before, I pledge to protect the natural environment. If we can keep our trees, the trees are a carbon dioxide sink. They, and that's what's been causing our, our global climate change, our global heating. Protect our trees. Another step I'd like to do is reduce the carbon footprint of the city vehicles. I think over time, as we replace vehicles, we replace them with electric vehicles. Makes good sense. The city vehicles aren't driving more than two hundred miles a day. And I've looked at the cost of, say, a Ford one fifty Lightning. It's hardly any different than a regular gasoline powered one. A lot cheaper to run and a lot cleaner. I just think that the city can take steps to preserve the environment, electrify, reduce its carbon footprint. And everybody doing something will make a difference.
Thank you. Dave, you'll be first on this next question. This is sort of a follow-up to what we were just talking about. And the question is, how can the city reduce greenhouse gas emissions in the city as urged in the Pierce County Regional Council draft environmental county-wide planning proposals? So anything further about greenhouse gas emission reduction, please? Dave?
Quite frankly, I really can't comment on that because I'm unfamiliar with that county plan, quite frankly. I'd, I'd have to, I'd have to analyze that, but there's, the things that I mentioned as an answer for the previous question kind of follows along with that, quite frankly, which has to do with electric cars and reducing the use of fossil fuel situation. So that's pretty much all I can say about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Roger, any further thing about to follow up with that?
No, I, I think, again, the two big greenhouse gas emissions that we are worried about are CO2, carbon dioxide, and methane. I don't believe that the city of Gig Harbor itself generates a great deal of methane. That's more for livestock feed yards, things like that. But we do create a lot of CO2. There are things that can be done, like I mentioned before, electrification of the city vehicle fleet would be a large step. I believe that we could potentially work with Penn Light to start maybe putting in some more electrical vehicle chargers within the city limits to attract people coming over to Gig Harbor, the tourism trade that a lot of people bring in their electric cars. I have an electric car myself. There's not too many downtown, which would be good if we had a few more of those. And I, again, I have to say that it's a multifaceted problem and thus requires a multifaceted solution. I still think protection of the environment and keeping the trees we have, enhancing our urban canopy goes a long way to combating any greenhouse gas emissions.
Thank you. Roger, you'll be first on this next question. Population growth within the current city limits increases demand for an array of services. In terms of budget, can you tell us what services you would prioritize and why?
Okay, I'm just writing it down. Okay, well, I'm not, I have to admit that I'm not a hundred percent familiar with the city of Gig Harbor's budget and the kind of services that are prioritized right now. It's clear that when elected, that would be one of the first things I would do is go back through the budget, look at what services are being offered, what our income stream is going to be, what our outgo stream is going to be, and then see where there's areas that could be either enhanced or reduced. My, my gut feeling is that currently the city is doing a good job providing services. And we have to understand some services come from Pierce County as well, some healthcare services. That's probably the best I can do right now, but as an engineer, I would go back through and look and see what, what services there are that are offered and then see what might be cut. Other, I don't, I wouldn't say I would be cutting things right now. I think reallocation of monies. Clearly, as a Parks Commissioner, one thing I would do is make sure that we have enough money to maintain the parks we have and also set money aside to maintain the parks that we're going to be getting in the future.
Thank you. Dave, your response to that question, please.
Well, I have to probably go along with Roger, quite frankly, in that I really, not being on the city council previously, I have not viewed the budget, quite frankly. And I'd have to look at it also to see if there were any situations that could be trimmed or reallocated for additional services. And that, that's about all I can say about that, quite frankly.
All right, thank you. Dave, you're, you're first on this next question. A new growth management requirement was passed in the 2021 legislative session. This requires that the city plan for a full range of housing options for its population and for anticipated growth. The options need to include housing for very low-income residents, supportive housing and shelter. What steps should the city take to assure that this range of housing is available for vulnerable individuals?
Well, I've noticed that as, as a resident, as we drive through the city, I do see a number of building projects going up that involves duplexes and triplexes, which obviously will wind up being rental situations. And rental situations in general usually are less expensive than actually a house note and an actual output for, for somebody to, to find a place to live. The other thing, quite frankly, is, let's see. A senior moment here.
Do you want me to repeat the question?
Yeah, yes, please.
All right. So it's about the new legislative requirement for the Growth Management Act that requires the city to plan for a full range of housing options for its population and for anticipated growth as well. And the housing needs to include a full range, including focused on very low-income residents, supportive housing and shelter. What steps should the city take?
Okay, did you mention homeless?
Well, for, for very, I didn't say homeless specifically, but, but for
Okay.
citizens in need.
Well, we are developing, it's not totally developed yet, a homeless situation. And as you look at the news in Seattle, you know, they have come up with all sorts of, of, of different camp out, campsites and so forth. It would seem to me that those who are homeless, who are living in RVs and tents and that, that nature, we could have the city support an RV park for them so that they would have a place to go where nobody would harass them. And quite frankly, we could observe and to their political rights. And we, we can address social services to them, quite frankly, because we have a number of social services in our city that could be of assistance to them.
Thank you. Roger?
Okay, thank you. That's another one of those problems that are multifaceted, that require a multifaceted solution. I've chatted with some folks that are intimately involved in affordable housing, low-income housing. There are a lot of things that we can and we should start doing. One is the, I know that the city of Gig Harbor's planning department is doing a buildability study. That's going to tell us where we can start putting any new developments. I think the city could go a long way with zoning to allow higher density housing within the new developments. I'd also encourage the city to help with zoning on allowing an infill projects where we might have residential on top of commercial. Again, with the eye towards affordable housing. I would also start reaching out to other cities, such as Bremerton. It's already started a supportive housing program and see what they did. I think we don't necessarily need to reinvent the wheel. We can look where other people have gone, learn from their mistakes and learn from their good things. So it's going to take some time, it's going to take some study, and that would be my job, one of my jobs as an engineer, to analyze it and solve that solution, solve that problem.
Thank you. Again, to the audience, you can text your questions to 253-861-6824. Roger, you're going to be first on this next question. What outreach have you, or are you planning to make to learn from city employees about land use issues? And what directives do you think the city councils should be making to the planning department?
Okay. Well, clearly, when we come to land use issues, we're going to be talking with two of the divisions within the city of Gig Harbor, the Planning Division and Engineering, because they do work hand in hand on all of this. I have reached out and to the city of Gig Harbor. I've been working closely as part of the Parks Commission with the Director of Public Works. And when elected, I know that one of the first things I would do is like to sit down with the Public Works Director, the Planning Division and Operations too, because they're also part of this large equation. As far as first directives, I'd like to wait for the buildability study to come out because if we're going to start directing where we start new development or any other planning, land planning issues, then we need to see what we've got. We have to get an assessment of what we've got and then we can sit down and say, what do we need? And if, once we do that, then we can say, well, here's where it would fit nicely. Working with engineering operations, do we have enough water lines there? Do we have enough sewer lines there? There's a whole host of things. So that's, I don't have any directives I would issue right now because I'm not, I'm not tied into the intimate details just yet. But I can guarantee you, as a civil engineer, I would be very interested in land use planning issues.
Thank you. Dave, your response, please.
Okay, and I agree basically with Roger in the land use issues. Quite frankly, we need to look at this schedule, survey that's come up to find out what's available for land and how it can be used and what services would be needed for any specific planning situations. I think that once that's done, then of course, the engineers could look at what's, what is available and what is, what is available insofar as would be acceptable to those areas. But let's also look at the voters. What would they like to see in those particular areas where additional buildings and infrastructure would, would fit in those areas?
Thank you. Dave, you'll be next for this question. Many Gig Harbor residents drive alone in vehicles to their jobs in a non-pandemic world at least. How can single occupancy vehicle commuting be reduced between Gig Harbor and various work sites?
Well, Pierce, Pierce Transit and Sound Transit, all of them have vans that are available, quite frankly, as well as Kitsap Transit, where people can ride to and from work by carpooling. That's worked very well. Actually, there's a couple of buses that private individuals have used as kind of a personal business to drive people to and from the shipyards. So there's all sorts of different opportunities to, to cut down on that, quite frankly.
Thank you. Roger, your response, please.
Okay, thank you. Well, commutes outside the city limits, do other workplaces in Kitsap County and Tacoma, Port Orchard, wherever, would be probably out of the jurisdiction, the city of Gig Harbor. Now, what we can do though, and I know that the city is currently working closely and we would continue to work closely with Pierce Transit. Pierce Transit is the operating agency that runs our fun Pierce trolley. I believe the one-on-one bus route also goes through, or maybe it's the one-hundred bus route. We pay as taxpayers into the Pierce County Transit, or Pierce Transit, excuse me, it's not Pierce. Um, we pay as taxpayers into the Pierce County Transit or Pierce Transit, excuse me, it's not Pierce County Transit. Uh, we pay into that fund and so we would be expecting some services. So I think as a uh new council member, I would start to coordinate pretty closely with Pierce Transit to see, here's how much money we're, we're supporting you with. And here's our future needs. Again, what we need are data. Without data, it's difficult to make decisions that are meaningful. So um we tap into whatever studies Pierce Transit have done, or even Kitsap County, perhaps they've got some data as well as what um what kind of transits that we could save on.
Uh Roger, you'll be next. Uh, we'll be first for this next question. What is the most pressing issue for the city council and how would you address it?
Okay, that's a, that's an actually one of the easier questions I've gotten this evening. We had a host of good questions. Right now for me, the most pressing question is to regain respect and honorability on the city council for the city staff and for the public. Um, I believe it's somewhat common knowledge that there's some rough times with the city council and the mayor. I've seen city staff who run and operate the city that are good, decent, educated, um excellent people uh being treated, let's say, not particularly well. So one of the first things I would like to do is regain the respect from the council to the public and to the public servants that serve Gig Harbor. Um, I worry about the loss of good employees from the city of Gig Harbor. The ones that are good can write their own ticket and when things get too uh let's say unfriendly here with them, they can go elsewhere. And if they go elsewhere, then the city of Gig Harbor is going to suffer. And consequently, the citizens of Gig Harbor are going to suffer for reduced services. So I believe that's the first one, is get a working council and mayor and working as a team so we can get solutions to our problems that we've got on hand and get projects done.
Thank you. Uh, Dave, your answer, please?
Well, I think uh probably one of the biggest problems, if not the biggest, largest problem with the council is that uh they need to show a little more respect for each other, quite frankly. I see uh as re- reading news uh in the newspapers and, and so forth, is there, there seems to be, everybody wants to be in charge, quite frankly, and has developed different uh groups of people with, with uh different agendas and not working as a team for uh some sort of a solidarity of uh leadership and proposals, quite frankly. Uh, I think that uh people need to realize there is what we call a chain of command that uh that councilmen need to respect and councilmen are not the uh, are not the executor, quite frankly. They're, they're not the executive, it's the mayor, quite frankly. And so uh as the council uh develops policies and uh loads on different things, they need to pass it over to the mayor and allow the mayor to uh execute that with the help of the staff. And so quite frankly, um there now also needs to be a, a little more of of reciprocal res- respect for the, the office of a mayor and, and the staff itself. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Dave, you'll be next uh for this question. What should the city of Gig Harbor's priorities be for growth management plan, for the growth management plan?
Good question. Uh, quite frankly, uh I think that uh we obviously need to uh maintain our uh small town atmosphere and our hometown feeling of uh of everybody knowing everybody and our small businesses and, and so forth and our, our uh waterfront uh shopping and our, our and our tourist uh uh group that keeps coming in. However, I think that uh one more time, what was the question again?
What is, uh, what should the city of Gig, Gig Harbor's priorities be for the growth management plan?
Okay, I think quite frankly, uh they need to uh uh follow each, each uh permit as it comes through based on the growth, the current growth management plan and have each person on the council look at that and come to an agreement. And once the agreement and elected is there, then they need to uh they need to agree to, to, to stand by theirs, the situ- I see situations where uh the council is uh voting on things that they approve. And then uh a, a smaller group in the council wants to backtrack and, and fight it. That way we have many different plans that they keep getting planned, but they didn't ever get completed. And that's one of the problems that we have.
Thank you. Roger, your answer, please?
Okay, um, well, first thing I would like to do is uh wait for the results of the buildability study. I've referred to that earlier. That's going to be an important and critical piece of information. It will allow us to find areas that we can build, uh hopefully not too many new areas, but maybe some infill as well. The next thing I would do then with that, the data from the buildability study would be to compare with our current comprehensive growth plan. See what uh, what has changed. Gig Harbor's changed a lot in the last five to 10 years. There's been a great deal of growth. Things are not the same. Um, and then we would have to start looking at what the predicted future growth is because there's no sense uh planning for something right now when it's going to be overtaken in five years. Uh, once those data have been uh developed, collected and analyzed, then the city council in coordination again with our planning division folks, our city engineers and our operations folks, because everything we build has to be operated, uh can then set some new goals for us and perhaps maybe come up with a revised, hopefully, comprehensive growth plan. That would take into account the requirements of our GMA.
Thank you. All right, Roger, your next, uh, this is the next question for you. Traffic and traffic congestion is a problem on the Burnham Overpass as well as Willatchit. What would you propose to address the growing traffic congestion at those locations as well as other busy spots in the city?
Okay, thank you. And that's, that's a question right up my line. Uh, first of all, the two overpasses, the Willatchit and the Burnham, uh that's a regional solution. That area is owned and operated by Washington DOT, Department of Transportation. I know that currently the city of Gig Harbor is working very closely with them on improvements to the area. I believe there's a uh, I believe there's a project in design uh for metering at Burnham uh overpass and the two uh traffic circles there. And Willatchit is also getting a study as well. Um, now, and once again, once you get the study, then you know what you have to do. With traffic within the city of Gig Harbor, okay, that's in our purview, that's in the city council's purview. Um, there are a few choke points. One thing I can say is that having come from California and those of you that have come from Seattle and elsewhere know that the traffic in Gig Harbor is not quite as bad as we make it out to be. However, with the use of uh more traffic circles and looking at some of the choke points, we could probably help ease some of these transient uh traffic backups. Clearly, Point Fosdick seems to be one. And also the one downtown by uh Heritage Distillery. But again, at nine o'clock at night, you could shoot a cannon down Harborview and you won't hit anybody.
Thank you. Uh, Dave, your response, please?
Well, actually, everything that Roger says, I quite frankly uh agree with. Uh, having a few uh military assignments out of state in uh very congested areas, the I, I don't see the traffic uh situation currently being uh at a choking point, quite frankly. It's something to certainly look at for, for the future. But uh if you compare it for uh situations in California, and I was also uh had a military assignment in Puerto Rico and, and Italy and uh it's nothing quite frankly. I think many people would look at traffic, traffic in uh Gig Harbor as uh they want it to be like it was thirty, forty years ago, and it's just not that way because Gig Harbor currently is not uh doesn't have the same traffic uh as it did thirty, forty years ago. We have to face that fact, quite frankly. So, yes, we need to look at the uh, the current survey uh as it concludes. And we do need to work with our uh county partners because, you know, Highway sixteen is a state highway. And we need to certainly look at other off and on ramps uh that they could come up with, simply because hey, the majority of people in, in, in many cases who live just outside the city of, of Gig Harbor drive to and from straight through Gig Harbor in order to get to work and, and to go home. And so it's, it's a problem for us. Thank you.
So much. All right, uh, I think we have about one more question here. Um, so Dave, you'll be first. How would you encourage, encourage small businesses?
Well, I'm a retired school teacher, quite frankly. And one of the things that I would encourage small businesses to do, uh es- especially to uh increase their business uh locally and in their hometown was to make sure that they hire our young kids in the summertime and maybe set up and, and uh the city could also set up some internships for college students who need to work in the summertime so that they could get an idea of, of how our economy works and how our city works. And uh we can attract many of those uh when they've completed their education. Uh, I think that uh another thing that we can do is uh perhaps uh grants for those who are for uh sole proprietorships, especially on the waterfront, because they have unique problems. Uh, unlike uh the uh, the chain stores like McDonald's and things of that nature. They have to look at, at uh supply, they have to look at the making up their own uh price situation, they have to do their own uh it adds and so forth. And the point is it just uh, it's very, very difficult for them to compete. So I would suggest that, quite frankly, in conclusion, that we uh, we concentrate on the sole proprietorships, the individual stores, and also uh they need to specialize like they've been doing in
Thank, thank you.
products that has uh logos of, of Gig Harbor.
All right. Oh, all right. Thank you so much. Uh, Roger, your response, please?
Okay, thank you. Um to encourage small business in the city of Gig Harbor, that again is something the city can do, but we have to be careful. The city only has a few tools that we can do. We can't really tell anybody who can come and who can't and set up a business here. But the tools that we do have are predominantly permitting, zoning, I'll try to touch on that a little bit later, but permitting. So the one thing the city can do to encourage locals, local small businesses is increase the, the throughput of permits. If a small business has to wait six months or a year for a permit, it kills them. There's just dead time, they can't be earning any money, but they've got expenses. We could also start reducing the cost of permitting this. Um, permitting fees are sometimes a huge upfront cost for small businesses that they can barely afford. If you're going to be a big box store coming to Gig Harbor, then you're going to have to pay the full fees and everything else. But right now, uh the two biggest things would be permitting speed and permitting cost. Uh zoning, we can quickly s- touch a few things on that in newly developed areas, newly developed. We might want to be uh including some zoning for small local businesses, bakeries, cafes and whatnot. That might encourage people to open up because they would have a dedicated clientele.
Thank you. Now it's time for closing statements. You each have one minute. Roger Henderson, you'll have the first closing statement, please?
Okay, um well, as I stated earlier, I'm an engineer and I'm trained to analyze and solve problems. That's what I did for thirty, thirty plus years with the federal government. Um, I pledge that I would work very well with our new mayor and our new city council members, as well as the existing city council members. I want to do this as a team effort. I think as a team, we can get so much more done than fighting against each other. Um, I will serve as a conduit for the residents of Gig Harbor. Uh, they have to have a voice, they should have a voice. We're elected by them and we serve them. I'll continue to support what makes Gig Harbor attractive, be a good steward of our tax dollars. I did that for thirty years with the federal government, make sure that our tax dollars were used wisely. I do pledge to preserve and enhance our urban forests, estuaries and waterways. And I would be honored to have your vote on August third.
Thank you. Uh, Dave, your closing statement for one minute, please?
Yes, thank you. Uh, quite frankly, um, I would be honored to have your vote and uh, I guess my uh primary concerns is making sure that our, our youth are involved in the development of our, of our city. Uh, so they understand uh uh business, they understand government. And uh as our, as a former high school uh teacher, uh I can see students very interested in it. And actually, they're very proud of being part of Gig Harbor. We'd like to, we'd like to keep that uh feeling within Gig Harbor and uh by uh including our youth in many of the programs that we have, uh certainly would allow them a little more uh evidence of decision-making of what they want to do uh as a vocation and where they want to live. And we hope that it's Gig Harbor, quite frankly, and that I can't deny the fact it's growth, but it's growth as a family, quite frankly. And that's the important thing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the candidates, those who are watching. We'd like to thank our timekeeper, Terry Baker, and our co-sponsors, the Affordable Housing Consortium, Black and Indigenous Organizing, Grid City Co-op, Latinx Unidos of South Sound, Southern Neighborhood Council Summit Waller Committee or so, Association, Urban League, Vibrant Schools and the YWCA. The League of Women Voters wishes to acknowledge that we gather on the ancestral lands of the Coast Salish peoples surrounded by their traditional waters in the shadow of Mount Tahoma. We actively seek inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities and current realities. Before you vote on August third, also check out the League of Women Voters Online Voters Guide, Vote Four One One, which you can reach as you see here on the screen. And also uh go to votewa.gov to check your voter registration. Both sites identify voter issues and candidate information
One, one.
specific to your voter voting precinct. We encourage everyone to use that as a resource in addition to the standard voters guide. Look for your ballot in your mailbox on July sixteenth or shortly thereafter. Use one of the many drop boxes in our county or mail your postage paid ballot as soon as possible after you receive it. If you're not yet registered, you may register right up until election day at the auditor's office. Your ballot must be postmarked or placed in a ballot box by eight PM on August third. Thank you to everyone for your participation and uh looking forward to a excellent voter turnout this, this uh primary season. Thank you again.
Thank you.